Testing, testing. Oh, good. It was saying my audio isn't good, so that's good.
That's not good, but it turns out there was line to you.
All right, we are good to go. Sally will be a couple of minutes late, she told me.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
We are, yes. Did we want to do roll call?
Sure.
Um, trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cranker?
Here.
Trustee Biarman?
I'm here.
Trustee George? Absent. Trustee Harper?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barney, we're expecting her in a little bit. And Mayor Furman?
Here.
Excellent. So Clayton, so tonight is a work session for a ethics training for our trustees. And it will be presented by our attorney, Clayton. Take it away.
All right, thanks for the introduction. So I won't, we'll hop right in. This is a training that I've kind of Frankenstein from a bunch of other things. Sursa workshops, CML, etc. That I think fits really well with, kind of does that job between being a good minder for all trustees, mayors, mayors, pro tem, new members, seasoned trustees, commissioners, new commissioners. It's kind of one of those, hey, this works for everybody. So you'll get a little bit of a refresher and those people who are brand new to being a trustee or board member, whoever's on, then it'll help you out there as well. And this is interactive, so as we go, I want you to feel free to raise your hand or ask clarifying questions, or just say, hey, that sounds crazy. Can you explain that a little better? I also gave you two handouts, ones from Sursa directly, and one is a handout that I kind of created that is a synopsis of a lot of the things we're going to go over. And those are good things to have in your trustee workbook. So if anybody carries a little string binder, a little notes, or whatever, you can print one of those double sided. And it kind of runs out a bunch of different things. So you can kind of like that quick guide that I sent you, I think is the one that I came up with. You know, to try to get on one page front and back so that you guys have a quick reference at if you're there and you needed something answered. You can look at your handy dandy quick reference guide sheet. All right. Hoping this is gonna work. There we go. Okay. So for those newcomers, the most important thing, and for people who are there just need a refresher, you guys need to remember that you're no longer a citizen. You gave up quite a few rights actually to become a trustee and to serve your town. You're you now are a member of a team. And it kind of changes your role in the community. So you need to kind of understand that. I don't read my slides. I expect you to kind of read my slides and move along. I put out the highlights and then so if you have no questions on that. I'm gonna move on. So welcome to the team. You're no longer an outsider. Okay, here's a more in-depth way. You should recognize your change in roles. You take an oath. And that means that you are now in full support of the constitution laws, town charter, which you guys don't have, and all ordinances and resolutions that are controlled and passed by the town. So some people, even if you don't like your laws, that's something you can change as a legislative body using the legislative process. But once those laws are in place and the laws that are in place, you have to support and defend and uphold your laws. You also now are under scrutiny. People are going to want to look at you and they're going to want to catch you. You know, they're going to be looking at, you know, trustee Harper, and they're going to say, is he going to have that fourth beer? Is he going to get in that car and drive? And they're going to start scrutinizing you. So just be careful out there. Also, there's you have a different set of ethical practices that know that non-trustees and non-board members don't have. You are now subject to fiduciary responsibility to the town and that which carries a lot, a lot of weight and liability. I'll talk about that a little more later on. And you also are you now have to give up some of your personal and financial interests if they conflict with what's going on with the town and or you're going to have to recuse yourself from being part of discussions on those subjects if you can't de-conflict. And then that's okay if you cannot de-conflict some things, some of you, especially in these little small mountain towns that we live in, kind of cross a lot of lines. And so that's where we just need to be careful about when we recuse ourselves and what we do and how we do it. Any questions about this slide? Okay. Okay, you're now a trustee. You are steward of the town. I kind of went over most of this, but this is a cool way to kind of break down. This is one of those kind of takeaway snapshot slides. If you are on a advisory board and not a trustee, you still have the same ethical responsibilities as a trustee. Okay, and it's no longer, hey, what's best for me, my business, and my family, your decision making has to be on level with what's best for the town and you have to be able to apply judiciously certain evidences that are presented to you and make decisions equitably. And apply that that standard, which is, hey, what's is what's going to be best for Silverton? And you're in without a thought as to what's going to be best for you personally. Kind of touched on this, this is that whole outsider perspective. And I'm gonna talk about how if you don't have the right perspective, you're going to open yourself up to some liability. You know, one of the major things that you have to consider here is the we versus the I. So each of you does have a big role to play, but you neither know one person can make a decision on behalf of the board. You have to make that decision. So you know, that's what discussion is for. And then you have a motion and then you have a second. Once that second is made, there's no more discussion and that and then the vote either either has to happen or the people have to withdraw their second and their initial motion. And if that passes and you were voting against that particular resolution or ordinance or task or whatever it is that you were, the prevailing side has won. And now that's the new thing. And your role is to get behind it, whether or not you voted for it or not, and then go for it as a, as a, as a unity or as a unified body. And board. So you know, it's one thing to say, well, I wasn't for that, but you know, we voted it and now that's a law. Now I am going to support that because that's the oath I took versus I wasn't for that. I'm going to write an article in the paper. Go grab as many of my friends and family and people I can and try to change their minds and, you know, try to overturn this law. It's not your role. So as a legislative body, once that passes, that's the law of the land, whether you agree with it or not. Any questions on this slide? All right. The major thing and the most important thing that you can do and what I would tell every new person, what I remind everybody is that you will be scrutinized and the most prevalent complaint and the, and the most nasty grams and emails and angry voicemails you're going to get is going to have to do with your transparency. And whether or not the community believes that you, what you're, how you're conducting your meetings are fundamentally fair. So you do, we do that by having this a very predictable order of things and a controlled meeting. I will tell you right now, and this is not for extra points for me, but you know, Mayor Furman does a great job controlling meetings, leading discussions, keeping, keeping people on task. And that goes a long way for you guys. And it gives you a lot of predictability in those meetings. You also record everything that you and put it on YouTube, but you do not have to. You could record it on a phone or just do a voice recorder and upload, you know, an MP3 or ask somebody if they want it, then you, you know, make them pay to transcribe it. So you guys are way ahead on this. And I think it shows because you know, I know that before I got here, I had heard not just some rumors that the community and the and the board of trustees, all the board of trustees wasn't necessarily getting along great. And there were some you know, questions as to the transparency and fundamental fairness of the meetings and all that. And I don't think that's the case anymore. I really feel like you guys have come together and you had a great turnout for your, your last vote. And I think I do see a lot of mutual respect between the community and the board of trustees and the commissions and the advisory boards. And so I really think Silverton's on a great track here. But this is something to and I'm not saying in the past it was your fault either. What I'm saying is these are the things that people are going to pick on whether it's true or not, because it's easy to make a generic statement. You're not transparent. Okay. Well, what do you mean by that? Because we had a public meeting, it was posted and we're all here. But that won't change somebody's mind. It really has to do with how you operate during the meeting. And I think you guys do a great job of that. I think Mayor Furman does a great job as the moderator and chairman of the meetings. Any questions on that? Okay. So how do we do better? You know, I think you know, right now it's I can't, I wouldn't, I can't say I see any weaknesses in how you guys control your meetings. You have a lot, you don't have all, you have great discussions and not everybody always agree. Isn't always an agreement, but everybody comes around and it's not always like, you know, a four, three vote. You get a lot of super majority votes. You're not constantly split. There's not a lot of second guessing. There's not a lot of arguing. So you know, I think you guys, again, I think this, this board in the past has done great. And I know that I heard some great comments about your what, what did you guys just do? You just did your field trip, right? Where you went and hung out together and
Or retreat.
Yeah, I think, I think who was it? I think it was trustee, our trustee Harper that made me laugh. He said that he, they got, everybody got to let their hair down. Was that? I think it was trustee Harper. He just froze, but that was funny. Okay, I can just imagine. Letting you tear down. Okay, so common pitfalls. This is what
Hey Clay, you're kind of breaking up a little bit. Maybe, maybe if we stop your video, you can or maybe I think it's on your end. I don't know if it's on our end, but
You guys need to be aware of, I think you do a great job. Again, I don't see any one major weakness here.
Don't type it in the comments.
I'm gonna text him.
Yeah, we should do that. Hey Clay, if you can hear us. We kind of lost you right at the beginning of the committing to avoiding common pitfalls slide. Oh, looks like we just lost you entirely. Hi guys.
Hey Jim, what town is Clayton based in?
Pagosa.
Pagosa. Pagosa Springs.
Should we send clear networks over to Pagosa?
Little hook of fiber.
Yeah.
Last mile.
Yeah.
Okay, he's reconnecting now.
Cool. Hey Sally.
Hey. Sorry, I'm making dinner here. Just listening carefully. I wanted you to know I'm fully present.
Okay, can you guys hear me again?
We can.
Okay, sorry about that. I was, my last comment was about trustee Harper's comment and the meeting about letting his hair down and that you guys had a great meeting. So that's a good thing that you guys are working together and I was just commenting on how I think you guys are on a great track and seem to be a very healthy board of trustees, which makes for a very healthy community. Hey, who do we got there? We got a little miss Barney on. Hey you. I think I saw you ripping last time I was in Silverton.
Oh yeah, we skied with you and your family.
Yeah, it was great.
Here's the other one. Okay, it's a family affair tonight.
That's great. Yeah, I'm sure mine. So here's
Universal show.
Yeah, you got it. Here's, here's some of the common pitfalls. So you, you guys do a great job of trusting your staff and you know, again, you have a great town manager. She cares about the town. She's smart. She knows when to ask questions. She's very hardworking. And you know, you need to trust that staff. And I think you guys do a great job doing that. So what, one of the major pitfalls and I'll, I'll focus, you guys, you know, read this and ask any questions. I think one of the major pitfalls is diffusing authority, right? And that happens when like there's a breakdown in how the meetings are run, there's a breakdown in how you are, the BOT portrays themselves to the community. And I think that all goes back to that predictability and having those, you know, transparent meetings and having that, you know, fundamental fairness as the, as the core, you know, value of your, of your meetings. And so as you do that, you know, the, the board's authority, meaning the people understanding that, hey, when you guys make a decision, you pass a law. You've, you've thought about it, you've, you've looked at it, you're doing it for the the good of the community and you've discussed it in public and you've taken public comment and then you make a decision on that. And then your authority and the trust that comes from that just grows. Any questions on any other of common pitfalls here? Okay. And so, you know, one of the other things is people, you know, I haven't seen you guys do it, but sometimes boards will get lost in the weeds because they don't want to talk about a major thing like a major development issue. They want to, you get lost in like, you know, what side of the property should the utilities come in on instead of you're voting on whether or not the development should get a density bonus for, you know, for affordable housing, stuff like that. Again, I haven't seen that, but that's one that's easy because it's easy to talk about stuff that you can control, make a quick decision on versus those items that are more uncomfortable to talk about. But I think the, this board does a great job with that. Okay, here's where I'm circling back to the comment about liability. You are covered by the CGIA, the Colorado government. I mean, governmental immunity act. That means if you're acting within the scope of your and I say employment here, the scope of employment means everything, right? Just means because you're trustee, I know you don't get paid or paid enough, but you're how, you know, everything you do as a trustee is, you know, is either within the scope of your employment, because that's the terms used in that and the act itself. Or it's not. If you go outside of that, you no longer are in that SOE that, which means that you're no longer covered by the government immunity act. So if you take your authority as a trustee and you do something outside of that, you lose that governmental immunity. So that's where you get into you know, if you, or you know, as a trustee, you really shouldn't be privately organizing a group of citizens against an ordinance that you were, that you're, that you voted no on, but that passed. That could be considered acting outside the scope of employment. And then if anything comes of that, like if, you know, if the if the make, make Silverton great again, group storms the Capitol building there and you're the person who promulgated that, you know, you're outside of your scope of employment. Okay? All right. Any questions on that? Okay. I've already kind of talked about this. This is just more more scary language to make to, so that you understand. I could quote cases and stuff, but that's boring. Just believe me when I tell you that people have done this and they have been sued and they have had personal punitive liability. And if you get sued and you're outside of the scope of your employment, Sursa and, and the town and myself are not going to come to your rescue unless you're within your SOE. Any questions on this? Okay, love it. So you do need to understand your job description and this goes for trustees and for you know, planning, planning commissioners and advisory boards, even we talked about that, that library board, even down to things like that, which they're not trivial, but you know, they're not also, you know, adopting the budget for the town, but they are making decisions. They have they're covered. And so you need to kind of know what your role is. And kind of make sure that you're acting within the scope of your role. No, you're not acting out of, acting under a conflict that you don't have personal financial interest in what you're voting on, etc. If you ever have a question like, hey, should we be doing this or not? Don't be afraid to go to Gloria and Gloria, if she doesn't have an answer, then she can come to me. And if I don't have an answer, then I'll Google it. Okay? All right, next thing. Uh, Gloria and Gloria, if she doesn't have an answer, um, then she can come to me. Uh, and if I don't have an answer, then I'll Google it. Okay? All right, next thing. Okay, I talked a lot about this again, but this is a good thing to understand. Um, you guys are, you guys are a legislative body. Uh, you make laws. You're not. Staff, you make laws and staff executes and makes those laws happen through. Uh, drafting and writing enabling ordinances, et cetera. You guys have enough to do with your discussions and as a decision-making body, you should not be the people. Um, you know. Kips again and, and that doesn't mean staff that can do whatever they want. Staff only does things. And, and I only take action based on direction from you as a board. So you, you know, you are as a body, very powerful. Um, and what happens inside of Silverton. And so. You know, the best way to, the best way to look at this is say, look, I'm never gonna, we're never gonna have off-record discussions. We're never gonna meet. Um, three or more and come up with and, and talk about public business. We are always, we're gonna. Notice, we're gonna notice our meetings. We're gonna go to our meetings. We're gonna have discussions there and we're gonna make decisions there. And that, and that is the easiest way to be protected is just follow. The, the policies and rules that we have in place right now and continue doing things as a board in public meetings. And if you, if you're not doing that, just make sure you can cite to an authority that says you're allowed to do what you're doing, especially if you find yourself like. Out in public, making speeches or doing anything or, because you act as an agent of the board. And so anything you say, people can take. People can take your statements as agency and um. And run with it. So one of those examples is if you're out and somebody says, hey, um. Mayor Pro Tem Barney, what, you know, what is the town gonna do about this? And Mayor Barney says. Oh, we're gonna do this and I'm gonna do this and you can, you can, you know, count on it. And then that's not what happens in that, but that person took steps. Uh, based on the information they were given by. Mayor Barney and they take and, and she has agency as a, as a trustee, as a board member. And they get themselves into, you know, some sort of financial liability situation where they relied on her statements and uh, are now. Say, you know, in the hole, a bunch of money because they bought a piece of property that, that they were told was gonna be rezoned. Well, they can then turn around and sue. Mayor Barney and Mayor Barney may not be protected under the CGI. Can you, can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, that time it was Jim that got frozen, not you.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, any questions on that? Are you guys thoroughly scared into? Not making decisions outside of the board setting? So remember it's a we not I. Um, and I already talked about this. This is like the takeaway slide. Get behind the decision. Use proper channels to change it only. And. Uh, understand that once you've made a decision that. Some, those, like say, for example, you make a decision on a development and that developer. Starts taking action like with a pre-development agreement, et cetera, and then. You flip-flop on that and you undo that. Or try to undo that. There's financial liability there. That developer can. You know, you might be on the hook for whatever financial loss that developer has up until that point, based on your previous decisions. And I'm actually, we're actually going through that right now in another municipality where they flip-flopped and you know, we're in the hole. A lot of money. And if it doesn't. Get back on track. Town's gonna have to pay the developers under a pre-development agreement and, and get nothing in return. Because they're, you know, kind of foot flopping on a major. A major development, whereas they're the decision-making body and they told, go forward with it and then they changed their mind. So. Just understand that there's liability out there. Your decisions carry a lot of weight and a lot of things get put in motion based on what you do. When you say, hey, we want the coolest, uh, I forgot who it was, also made a comment that made me laugh. We want the, um, you know, the coolest best bathrooms and. Of any municipality in Colorado, which it looks like you're gonna get. That, you know, once that gets set in motion, it's hard to undo that without liability. So just keep that in mind. And I'm not saying that wasn't a great decision. I'm just saying that's a good example. Any questions? Okay. Another one, the takeaway is, is this um. You know, you're at the bar, you're at a restaurant and you're talking with friends and all of a sudden they're like, hey. We want you to get rid of this person. We don't like the way this is going. Um. You know, that's not really, that's not for you to decide in that moment and especially not, not, especially if you're discussing it outside of public setting with another. Um, trustee member. So you're allowed to talk about. You're allowed to talk about. Um, official things. But I strongly advise against it. So if it's something that is on the agenda or. Um, you know, if it's already been decided and you're clarifying it for someone, great. If you, if it's on the agenda and somebody's trying to. Talk to you about it before you're, you're discussing it in public with the rest of the board, I strongly advise against it. It's just such a gray area and you can go down the slip. The slippery slope really quick and get yourself in trouble. And once you get outside the SOE, you're on your own. Okay. The chair who, in your situation is um, Mayor Furman. Is, is basically, you know, that role model and moderator for the entire commissioner board. Um, you, again, you guys do a great job with this. You, you're respectful to the, to the community. The community is, for the most part, gives you um, that mutual respect. In return, and you guys do a great job sticking to the agenda and focusing your discussion. Uh, again, um, I applaud Mayor Furman, you know, for his leadership and, and his role. It's not easy. Um, and you know, he does a great job, so. Those of, those of you future aspiring mayors, you know, I would kind of take a look at what's, how these meetings are being run and um. You know, try to, try to mimic that in the future if, if you want to be uh, the next mayor. Okay, um, this, again, this is like your little cute little takeaway slide. And if you've heard a lot of discussion, go back and forth and you feel like you're being interrupted a little bit because it's, but. It's really the fifth time that you've gone over the same point and you hear. The, the mayor say, hey. I'll take, uh, that's, you know, we're closing discussion. I think we've talked about this enough. I'm, 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 I'm now willing to accept a motion. That's just, you know, how it goes and you kind of have to get behind that. Um. Okay, and if you see that as well, you, you, you're allowed to speak up as a trustee and say. Hey, uh, okay, you know, we're going in circles here. I'd like to make a motion. Once you make that motion, if it's seconded, then that ends the discussion. So um, that's a, you know, a way to get something to a decision. I wouldn't exercise that in the middle of a discussion. Um, because it's kind of a jerk move unless you're sure that. You know, everything's been, that, that you're just kind of going in circles and you're just kind of spinning your wheels. So public hearings, this is really important. So we just switched from, you know, meeting to a, a public hearing. Hear me when I tell you that a hearing is, is a, is a term of art and legally it matters whether you're at a public meeting or in a public hearing. Um, hearings, and I'll get kind of more into this. Um, are, are quasi-judicial function. And what you're basically doing is you're taking. Testimony, whether that's the presentation of the uh, the person trying to, like a developer trying to get you to um. Have, you know, approve a sketch plan or whatever may be in front of you. And I have some examples on that handout sheet I gave you of when you're in a quasi-judicial. Function and will designate those, of course, on the agenda as hearings, because they have to be noted, noticed differently. That's when you kind of jump into this role, almost like a judicial role. And so. Even though you're a legislative body during quasi-judicial uh, matters and public hearings, you're acting uh, as, as a judge. Okay? And it's important, again, you guys do a great job of this, um, to follow that. Follow that agenda and also to make the comment like, hey, guess what? Now we're moving into a public hearing. We'll listen to the presenters. We'll take. Public comment. We will discuss it and then we, and then you are allowed to make that decision only based on. You know, the testimony and other evidence that's presented to you in your packet or by um. Either for against whatever that agenda item is and public comment against or for that. At that moment, you're not supposed to take into account. Um, personal visits to a develop, development site, uh, ex parte communications, meaning. You're really not supposed to talk about things that are happening at a public hearing before it happens with people that um, can persuade you. So um. And, and you want to listen and not have a pre um, just, you know, you don't want to have a predisposition in your mind. If you come in and make a comment like. Hey, are we gonna have this hearing or what? Because everybody knows that we're all voting yes on this. Um, you might have just undermined the entire thing and somebody could file a rule 106 appeal against you and, and probably get it, especially if you say something like that on the record. So you can get into the middle of the development and somebody could uh, appeal your decision on that, which can uh. Uh, have injunctive measure against you and you'll have to hold up that entire development until you. Undo that. And sometimes it can't be undone and you have to start the process over. And then you have a really pissed off developer. And the, and the money um, is still, you know, out there. And so you've just exposed the town to significant liability. So um, here's a do and do not. Again, I think this is one that I, I, I was very careful to put into your um, your quasi-judicial handout and your. Um, packet regarding. You know, your little quick reference guide. So you know, when you take public comment. You, you don't, you can say, okay, yeah, that's a great comment. Let's discuss that. Here's what I think, but it's definitely not that you don't want to debate. A public speaker, especially not. You know, at a public hearing, you accept it. And you. You.
Clayton, we lost you again.
That's not me.
No, it's not you.
Okay.
Working on it. You guys kicked off again. Give him a couple minutes to rejoin.
Hey, you guys hear me again?
Yep.
I just kicked all, I just kicked my family off wifi, so hopefully. This won't happen again. I deal, you know, we deal with the same stuff. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that I'm not talking to somebody in, in Denver with like a hundred gigabytes per second. You guys understand how this stuff works. It's, it's a pain. Um. Okay, but we'll just, you know, let's keep on trucking. So here's our do's and don'ts. I think I beat this one. I think you understand. Um, and then again, the question like, well, you know, do we, does anybody want to make a public comment? Knowing full well that, you know, your public comment will be in this, don't, I mean, this is, I've actually heard this. We'll take public comment now, but I don't think it's gonna make a difference because I think, you know, we're ready to make a decision. And you're like, wait, don't, no, you can't do that because you haven't heard all the testimony yet. And you could be undermining. You know, that particular. Process. So. This is where, you know, again, these hearings, these are where you get into these quasi-judicial versus legislative. And it's very interesting because. You are a legislative body, but there are many things that you do that kind of go into this judicial role where you are acting as judges. So just think to yourself. You know, if I, if, if I was a judge or if I saw a judge. Talking about a particular matter or, you know, about a civil or criminal case outside of that. Outside of the courtroom and making decisions or, or, you know, gathering their own information. You know, that's wrong, right? So when I present. To a judge, are you guys there? Am I frozen again?
You're good.
And when, when I, when you, when I present to a judge, he doesn't see anything. So when I, I was a municipal judge and, and you'd be surprised how much as a judge does not know. Um, and, and your situation, I, I get that that's not the exact same thing because. In a town, um, you know, with. Gossip and rumors and, and, and just conversation, um, you're gonna be exposed to things that are coming up or have already been. Decided on and you, you know, you guys just have to understand your role there and do your best, but that's what you need to be thinking about is. If the judge knew information or decided um, on a case based on information that wasn't presented in court. That's appealable and that appeal is gonna win. It's the same thing here. If somebody. If you're making decisions based on ex parte, meaning like out of, outside the hearing. Context, um, or you have prejudgment, you can get overturned on something. And again, if you're far, if you're pretty far down the road. With a certain decision you've made and that comes to light, that decision can be overturned and you could be stuck um. Without a chair when the music stops, holding a very big uh, bag of liability. And again, you know, liability in, in most cases that hurt town is, is financial liability. Okay, so and the great thing about um, the quasi-judicial function though, is that you don't have to know rules of evidence, okay? It's basically, somebody's like, well, that's hearsay. Don't listen to that. Hearsay, that doesn't count. You, you can listen to hearsay all day. You just give it the appropriate weight. Um, there's no rules of evidence. You don't have to know. You know, the Colorado rules of evidence and you don't have to worry about um. You know, any formal judicial rules, but you do need to consider everything. Um, and then you can weigh the credibility of a statement. And so, for example. If you're like wondering about. A development and the developers, you know, telling you all these great things. You can take with a grain of salt, obviously, you know, per your discretion, what the developer is saying, because you know they want that development because they're gonna make money. Um, and so they might be telling you something from their perspective that maybe isn't a lie, but maybe it's just a little bit. Um, exaggerated and or is looked at in a light most favorable to them versus. The light most favorable to the town, which is what you should be trying to weed through everything to get to. Ex parte, um, I've already talked about this. They may have questions about ex parte contacts. That is a kind of a term of. Uh, that is definitely like a, a legal term, but I think in this context, it's fairly straightforward. Any questions about that? Okay. If uh, trustee Harper gave me a thumbs up, so trustee Harper understands. I'm sure everybody does. Yeah. Uh huh, uh huh. All right, I'm just making sure he's paying attention. Okay. So I, I, again, I beat this to death, but you really need to be careful. One of the major things that people. Uh, that don't understand that I often get into. A lot of explanation over is site visits. Um, let your staff do this, let your staff do site visits, let your staff pro- provide a sketch plan, let your staff present to you. Um, that, you know. What, what's, what can be approved when Lisa comes and tells you about a particular, and I, and I use development a lot because. You know, playing. Playing developments is one of the major things that you decide on in a quasi-judicial function and you take advisory. Uh, the advisory boards opinion to heart when you're making those decisions. But you really shouldn't be the one out there taking the tires. You shouldn't be walking over the development. You shouldn't be kind of pre-forming your own ideas. If you live next to the development and you see stuff. You know, we can't avoid. You know, we can't avoid that. We're in a small town. It's very hard to drive through Silverton. And if there's a development. You know, on Main Street, you're not going to avoid it, but just don't make an effort to go try to gather your own evidence and facts, okay? Also trying to talk to staff uh, before a public hearing on a matter and like gather information before it's in the public setting is a no-no. So if staff is saying like, oh, that's, you know, hey, I want to know, I want to see that sketch plan before. Whatever, just wait for the staff to to give you the packet and and wait for that packet to be public. Um, and then wait for a public hearing to really discuss any questions you have. You don't need to see clarifying information about something before it gets to that public hearing. Okay, prejudgment bias, this is one of those ones that kind of sneaks in and you don't even recognize it. Everybody has bias, okay? We're we're humans, that's okay. Everybody, um, for example, uh, you know, you might just have it that we don't want, you don't want to develop park space. Okay, you don't want to develop open park space. But you really can't come in and say, I'm not voting yes on this because it's open park space. And if you've. Said something publicly beforehand, like I'm not accepting developments and open park space. You might have just made a prejudgment statement that could affect that particular development. Um, whether you're for or against it. So say you're, say you're for it and. And and it passes just because you're for it and everything went okay to then in that you're. Could undermine the entire process. So just always, um, whether you have an open mind or not, try to have an open mind. And whether you have an open mind or not, do not telegraph in a public meeting that you've already made up your mind. Because that's bad and, you know, you're going to have to fight your human nature on that. And everybody recognizes that and there's a lot of. It's really hard to show prejudgment bias, but it really comes into like you're ma- making your statements. Let's see, the, so they'll leave your profession at home. Like, so say you're a private developer. You don't want to come in, it's okay to have personal knowledge on a subject. But you don't want to come in and say, yeah, you know, I don't like that sketch plan because I would have done this blueprint differently because I'm a architect. Not your decision to make. So that, if the staff presents you a sketch plans. You know, the good idea fairy goes away and you need to make a decision based on the rules and regulations that you've adopted in the building code. And in, um, you know, through local ordinances. Any questions? We're we're cruising. But it is, you know, it is your night. Um, I'm sure you want to do other stuff, but this is important to. Um, at least think about, and I'm here, so don't be afraid to speak up. Okay. Once you've made a decision at a public hearing, you really only have certain things you can do. You either approve it with the conditions and and you get this all the time, right? Um, Lisa says, hey, you know, we 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 advise that. That this be approved with the conditions that blah, 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 blah. You can totally, you can totally do that. You can deny whatever that is put in front of you as a, as whatever the ask is, you can vote it down. Nope, we don't want, we don't want this in our town. It doesn't um, fit with Silverton's uh, vision and it doesn't fit with Silverton's and that it doesn't have to be. It could be completely within your building code. It could have, check all the right boxes and you guys can just decide that you don't want it. Um, that's fine. You really should have, but then you really need to have a basis of why. Um, you're not approving something or why you are approving something. And then, of course, you want those. Uh, and you can, you can table it or also say like, we need more action on certain, uh, we need more information on this. We're going to continue this to another hearing um, before we make a decision. And then, of course, if you do make a decision, just make sure. And I, you guys, again, this this happens in Silverton, the staff does a great job. Um, analyzing and synopsizing what went down in a meeting and then putting that in the writing and why you made the decisions that you made. So we 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 want those written findings, especially for quasi judicial matters. Uh, so that if there was an appeal that you guys would, we would survive that appeal. Here's your options for those findings. And again, staff, you know, will help direct you through this. I don't, I don't see any. Um, drafting your own findings is fine. I don't recommend it because if each of you. By drafting your findings, I mean like a board finding versus like an individual finding. If you have. Uh, you know, trustee Biarama's finding and trustee Harper's finding and trustee. I'm there pretend Barney's fa- on fight, you guys are going to have three, you're going to have the same decisions with three different. Reasons for those decisions because you're three different, you know, entities. So if you're going to draft your own findings, it needs to be up entirely by the board as a whole.
Hey Clay, in in this world where we have recordings of all of our meetings as well as, you know, pretty detailed minutes being done by staff. Is it still the same? Or would you still suggest an independent drafting of findings by staff?
Uh, yeah, you know, I think it's, I think that's happening anyway, and it's really just, it's brief. It's, you know, board made this decision and it was based on these things. For more details, you know, please see. WWW dot YouTube backslash Silverton meeting, you know, five eleven twenty twenty two. That's fine.
Okay, that's a little different than I think. I think we've often, we, we include the motion, but we don't necessarily include the basis.
Right.
As a part of the description because it was discussed already, but we could totally write that down.
Sure, and that's just the best practice, the pen and writing and do that at the end so that. Um, I don't know how long you keep these, but we, you're only required to keep the for so long. Um, and so as years go by, some of this stuff falls off. But again, in this day and age, um, there's still people who want to see it. And I think just a really brief justification. Is better um, than like a written findings, but I thi- I think you do that without realizing it. In your minutes quite a bit and also just based, just in your um, written. Response to say a development, right? We we approve development with these certain findings and with these uh, conditions. It meets the term, it meets the terms of the code, blah, 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 blah. And then. You've, then you relay that information, of course, back to. Um, you know, the developer, whoever, whatever motions in front or whatever decision is in front of you. But that's definitely best practice. So and so far that you don't think you're doing a great job of that. Um, you you might want to add a little more meat to the, to that, just as the best practice, but. You know, with recorded youtubes and all that, again, one way to do is just reference back to that. Say, you know, for discussion on this, you know, reference that URL, but where that rec- record is. And I think that's usually good enough.
I had kind of a little question about. Oh, go ahead. Did I go over? See who's talking.
No, no, you're good. You're good.
Um. Clay, you said that you can make a motion to deny if you just kind of feel like denying is the right thing to do. This has come up to me, had this question about the Board of Adjustments specifically, but, um. Can you just clarify like on what grounds you motioned to deny? Because my understanding. Or I guess my assumption was that it needed to be grounded in the process or the. Um, like what we have an authority to make a decision about and then also. Like something related to what's already the law in an ordinance or related to the town code that exists.
Yeah, that's, uh, if you have a, you know, if you have authority you can cite to like an ordinance or the building code, if you don't think it fits. Um, that's best to do that because if you're denying somebody, especially in a, in a quasi judicial matter, you're, you're affecting their. You know, that that's one of the ways to distinguish between quasi judicial matters and not like. If you're in a quasi judicial hearing, your decision is going to affect that person's private property rights, correct? And and most cases, especially under our our development example. And so if you're going to deny it. If you're, if you want to um, kind of bulletproof and any appeal against that. You'd want to state on record while you're denying it, but you keep in mind that like the building code has some pretty, there's. There's obvious kind of black and white reasons to deny something, but then there's kind of idealistic reasons to deny something. You know, you have a, you have a mission uh, and and a vision for your town and there's language in the code that states. Um, you know, we were trying to keep the culture and. You know. Whatever other idealistic examples that are written there, I don't have it in front of me, but you can say, you know, this doesn't fit the character and. Um, vision and culture of Silverton. We don't want this, you know, building, it's too modern looking. It looks like a little skyscraper in the middle of our, um, you know. Whatever, you know, however you describe the town of Silverton and and that could. You know, there's not necessarily a specific black and white thing there, but it's enough to. To to cite to and make that motion. I know it's kind of a generic answer, but you don't just want to be like, I don't, I don't like it. I'm denying this. Uh, I've moved, I moved to deny. And, you know, wh- what what you'll see in some unhealthy boards. Is somebody who's come in and just doesn't like something because they're trying to represent a constituent. For whatever reason, like they're really playing po- politics hard and they say, I just don't like it. Um, you know, I got a lot of negative feedback on this and I'm I'm going to motion to deny it. Well, i- in that case, if it's somebody out on their own, in most cases, there won't be a second and the motion will fail for lack of a second. But if it does go to a second and gets voted down, um, you know, you you're really going to want something. Because that developer, whoever it is, is going to, the weaker your reasoning is, is going to challenge you. And especially if you say like, well, my, you know, I've talked to a lot of people about this and they don't want it. Well, if those people, if you didn't discuss that with those people in a public hearing, you just. You just made a blanket statement that you had prejudgment and bias coming into that your decision-making process and that is enough for a one oh six appeal. That you probably will lose. So just be careful, like you really want to be making your decision on a quasi judicial matter. With the evidence and testimony and information that's presented to you at that hearing. Are we good? That that. Does that answer the mail there?
I think so.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, thank you.
You have any questions about the content of this? Uh, particular slide? So, you know, something fails, it doesn't like, if you, if you moved for something to happen and it fails. That doesn't mean you're you're right back where you started, right? Because somebody could still make a motion with conditions. Or somebody can make a motion to deny it. So somebody is, if it fails, you, you still need to give direction, right? Develop that we deny this, okay, or hey, let's, I moved to approve and it doesn't pass, okay? Nothing really has happened. You're right back where you started. That makes sense. So somebody needs to either make a motion then to unequivocally deny it or to try to approve it with whatever conditions exist. Um. That or that, or that whatever conditions come up during the course of that hearing that you want to apply to that particular decision. And we, our code, I I I looked through our code briefly. I don't think you have the code that says uh, failure is is equivalent to a denial. And and then you probably shouldn't either. If you do, we want to change that anyway because, again, there's, there's, there's a couple of other options. You could table it or and or you can approve it with conditions. So just because something fails doesn't mean, that's not the end of the, that's not the end of the road. Okay. Anybody have questions on this slide? This is basically kind of a takeaway of what I said. If somebody comes in and says, I'm requesting that you rezone this. And you don't want to rezone it to what they have it zoned to, but you decide you're going to rezone it to. Um. You know, something else, that's not a thing because that's not the ask. The ask is, we want you to rezone my property from this to this. Voting on a different zoning that you guys come up with is not. What your job, you're not, and your, and your job also isn't to like change a development application to get it to a yes. If the development as presented. It is denied, then it's denied. You don't vote on a development. Conditions are one thing, but changing the actual application is quite another and and it's. I want to say there's some gray area there, but. It's kind of like, um. You know, define pornography, right? Well, I know it when I see it. So you'll know when you see it. Um. If you're making an actual like development change or if you're. Um. You're just making a condition to that particular development. Um, approval. And if there is a question there, you know, I I think I spoke up at one of our first meetings. And was, and and kind of clarified some of this too, that, hey, you know, that's not really your, that's, we're we're out of our purview here because. The ask is this and you're changing that ask. So don't, don't play applicant. And don't play citizen, you know, you make the decision that's in front of you. And then variances are a whole different thing. So when somebody comes to ask for a variance, that's the only real exception. Somebody says, you know. I want twenty feet, I want to, you know, I know that I'm not supposed to build within twenty feet of this road, but, um. You know, there's a wetland. You know, there, and they ask for twenty feet and you're like, we can't give you twenty feet, but we'll give you fifteen for the variance. That's something you can change substantively. As an example. That makes sense. And that person would probably take the fifteen feet, even though they asked for a twenty foot variance. Okay, um, this is kind of geared towards more planning commission. I don't know if I have any planning, other board members on, but. Um, this applies to the board as well. So don't try to fix something. And don't, um. Don't get and don't get involved with private party problems. So somebody comes to you. And they're like, hey, I want to do this. And somebody else, and a public comment is from the HOA president who's like, this is not. Our HOA want to allow this, so you, you have to vote it down. That's not true at all. In fact, you're, you cannot even consider. You like an HOA covenant because that's a private matter. If the, if if it, if it meets the standards of our code. Um, and otherwise is acceptable as a sketch plan or a plan, then you can vote to approve it. If it's against the HOA. It's HOA's job to file an injunction against that person to, that's going to build within the HOA. So don't, don't get involved with. You know, private party to private party. Issues. That's kind of a hang up. Sometimes people don't understand that or like it, but that's just the way it is. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, now we're into the fun stuff. Ethics, just good old raw ethics and conflicts. So basically, and and we just passed, um. Uh, you know, it what, it wasn't just because a citizen brought it up. We had already started talking about having uh, our own. Code of Ethics adopted and you guys recently, in the past six months, I believe, adopted a code of ethics for Silverton. And those code of ethics are um, in line with Colorado statute. And so, um, and I touched on this a little bit, but just understand that if you have a subst- a substantial financial or personal interest, so. This is one of those like, well, this is substantial tag on to the personal interest or does it, does it have to be? Um, or is it just a substantial financial interest? There's a lot of argument back and forth on that. My advice is that. The the substantial only applies to the financial, right? So just because, for example, a development comes in. And the development is going to, because of the type of development, it's going to greatly increase property in the, you know, the. Property values and you happen to own property in Silverton, your va- your property values are going to increase. Because the appraiser is going to come look at this new development and it's going to be used as a comp and and it's going to be really high and it's going to up the. Your value of your property. That's not uh, a direct or indirect substantial financial interest. If you are, um. A partner with the developer, of course, that's a substantial financial interest, or if you seek to personally gain. Um, like say, for example, you have. You're trying to change a law to add um, accessory dwelling units to properties and you happen to have an accessory dwelling unit. That you need to be accepted as a short-term rental or you're going to have to long-term rent it. Accepted as a short term rental or you're going to have to long term rent it and it's way more lucrative for you to be. Short term renting it, that's a substantial financial interest. Personal interest really has to do with that appearance of impropriety, meaning this person has. We'll say you're, say you're on a board, right? You're on the library board, not like the. Like, or, or some other private entity that isn't under the town's thumb or an advisory board. That you're sitting as a subcommittee member on, but that you actually have. A, a personal interest in something because you're the. You know, I'm going to pick on Mayor Proton Barney. If Mayor Barney, yeah, everybody knows Mayor Barney loves to ski and she loves to. Take her kids skiing and she has a personal interest in making sure Kendall Mountain is. You know, doing well. In your case, it's easy because Kendall Mountain is controlled by the town, but in a lot of other towns, their local. Ski hill is not and it's a private entity. In that case, if you're. The president of the, you know, ski club that's affiliated with that private mountain, you can, you have a personal interest and you shouldn't be voting. On things that affect. You know, the, the benefit that particular private entity. So that's, that one's a little more. In the eye of the public, you know, what would they say if that, you know, that, you know, they know what you like and what your interests are. And so you need to stay away from being, being involved in those things where you have a direct personal interest.
I have a little question about that. That came to my mind as well as you were describing this slide. I wonder, Kendall's a great example, you know, I don't benefit financially from it, but I have a. Strong personal interest in seeing it succeed and I may benefit, you know, recreationally or. But. I, in a, in a small town like this, I'm just wondering like, how do we ever vote on anything? Don't we have strong personal interests in? I have a strong personal interest in the preschool. I have a strong personal interest in. I don't know, like everything. How do we, what's the lens for that?
The best lens for that is if your personal interests align. Which in most cases they will, all those examples you mentioned, because Kendall Mountain is owned by the town and because the preschool. How well the preschool does. Is directly aligned with the public's interest, then. That, that's all okay. So in, insofar that your personal interests align with, it's. The public interest for the community, having, there's, there's no argument that having a good school system. That, that your recreational, like the, the town owned recreation is a public benefit and benefits the town. That's okay, right? So that's why I use you as an example, because Kendall Mountain isn't private. If you were the owner of Wolf Creek. And you also are the son of the owner of Wolf Creek and you were sitting on. The planning commission. And Wolf Creek was asking for. You know, a grant from the town. You have a financial issue, you have a personal interest and you can't do that. And that's an example from a podcast that actually happened. But in your, in our example, because those things directly align with public's interest, I think that's a great, that's the lens. Is, are your personal interests? Divergent from the town's and public interest or? Is the thing you're talking about or voting on going to benefit the community?
No, I just wanted to clarify and make it super clear that. You provided a hypothetical with a fact that is not true, that, you know, a private owner of Kendall. That resulted in you suggesting in that scenario Sally wouldn't vote on things because of a personal conflict. But that in fact, in town, you're not making the suggestion that Sally shouldn't vote on Kendall because Kendall is owned and operated by the town of Silverton. I just want to make that super clear before we move on.
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor Proton Barney's interest in Kendall Mountain. And everybody's interest should be, her personal interest just is, happens to be a personal passion, but it's not. And a personal interest that diverges from the town's public interest. And so Mayor Proton Barney could definitely. Vote on matters involving Kendall Mountain.
Okay, that's, that's clear and. Um, I'm wondering if then, so Kendall or Memorial Park or a school, those seem to me. Somewhat clear, mostly clear in most situations. If we looked at a scenario of like. Land development or. Like, do I have a personal interest? What if I have a personal interest in the coffee shop? Or, you know, like when, when it cut, when it leans into a private business situation. Is that, is that the red flag?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think again, the lens here is if. If, if, is there an appearance of impropriety or you using your power to, for some like personal interest that. In a private transaction, really like. Oh, I really like this. Coffee shop is. It could be, but again, I don't think it rises to the level of like, you know, a personal interest that affects your ability to look at. You know. That affects your ability to apply the code and make a fundamentally fair decision. It would have to be, you know, your personal interest like affects your ability to. You know, either affects your bias or you have prejudgment or rises to the level of you not being able to make a fundamentally fair decision. With that particular matter. And sometimes what we do with this is. Is if somebody's like, you know, somebody brings up like, well, everybody knows that's that person's favorite coffee shop and they're. They're circumventing the rules to allow them to have a bigger sign than everybody else and that's not fair, then you know. What we would end up doing is what I suggest doing is having a cleansing statement saying, hey. Mayor Proton Barney, isn't it true that you, you attend, you know, the Silverton Main Street Coffee Shop every morning and they have the favorite cup of coffee? And you just couldn't live without it and you're allowing them to, you know, have this, you know, whatever. You say, no, that's true. Okay. Does that affect your decision here to apply the code and be fundamentally fair in your decision making? Absolutely not. I'm, I'm going to. Put the town's interests above my own. And then that's sort of like, you know, low level decision making, I'd still support you voting on it.
So do I make the cleansing statement or do you?
I do and it would all, and it's all, it's, it's, it's not for show, but it's also. Just to kind of de-conflict. An appearance of impropriety, meaning like, hey, somebody's brought it up, let's address it and, and take it seriously. But also knowing that. You're not going to. Overturn or allow something that's directly flies against the, the laws and ordinances that you swore to uphold. When you, you know, took the oath of office as a trustee. So, and again, I think, you know, this is one of those things where. I don't, you don't want to get wrapped around the axle on it. It's obvious when somebody has a personal interest in something that is a private matter. I think, and it has to, it has to be fairly obvious, otherwise. There's no way to show the personal interest, right? Cause everybody has their favorite coffee shop and I'm all for that as long as you can apply fundamental fairness to your decision making if the coffee shop wants to. Do something.
I think we could do this all day, but I had one other, I'd like to make it just a little bit more of a gray area and something that. I feel like we have seen and are likely to see again, which is what if Sally was childhood friends with the owners of the coffee shop? Are still best friends, you know, do everything together, go to Durango together, go on vacations together like. And it's always seen around town together and then they're asking for a variance, the sign code. In, in that case, is it still okay? Once the cleansing questions are asked, if Sally says I'm going to be completely objective in this decision? Or is it like so much of a perception issue that it would go the other way?
Yeah, I mean, I think in that case, Mayor, I, you would want to. Recuse yourself, even if you couldn't make a decision, I think that's one of those. That's one of those areas where if you recuse yourself, it shows that. It builds that trust with the community. And is the only, the only reason I would suggest in that situation, doing a cleansing statement and having someone vote on. So in a matter like that is if we had to, is if we needed the quorum and you were the only person and you leaving meant that nothing was going to happen. And then we ask those cleansing statements and there's an actual exception under the statute for that. That if you have to vote. Then you, you can, as long as there's, you know, you can show. You know, through a series of questions that you can be fundamentally fair, or if you just, it doesn't have to be like a bunch either. You can just say like, look, everybody knows you're. Personal friends with these people. Are you, are you able to separate that in order to make a decision for the town? Because you have to be here for the quorum.
I guess one more, just to dive in one step further. Let's say we have a three, two decision where Sally ends up being the deciding vote. And she had to in order to make the quorum, does she bear any potential personal liability or is there a process? That we adopt to make sure that that perceived conflict that we openly addressed. And then move forward despite, doesn't create an issue?
No, because we do, if we do the process correctly and, and the scenario, which, you know, in our scenario, we have, we've, we've recognized it, we've. Asked, we made the cleansing statements and we've called upon the exception for Sally to be able to vote. Then she is under that. Umbrella for. Within the scope, scope of employment. So she's under her SOE and she's not, and she's still protected from personal liability and there wouldn't be any. The appeal would go to the town based on, you know, bias or whatever, and we'd be able to. Show that we did the process correctly and that, you know, we have. We called upon the exception and, you know, those, those are really hard to win on appeal. They, they, they. This is very common and the courts generally recognize that. You know, the, the personal interest matter isn't enough. If it's a substantial financial interest, then, you know, we're different. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. That's good though. See, this is the sort of thing where you think. There's so many different scenarios and it is, it is good to kind of war game it a little bit because you're going to face these things. I'm sure you already have, so.
My other side is the opposite of Shane's scenario, which is. There is perception that there's a substantial personal interest. And there may be a time when to garner some good faith, support and trust from the community, it might make sense. But. But that, that. Wouldn't necessarily be based on. An actual substantial personal interest conflict. And I, so it just seems like anytime that we are in the, in the terrain of. Perceptions going one way or the other, we probably just need to stop and like. Make, evaluate the process and be sure that our, I mean, I think Gloria has done a, obviously a really expert job of keeping us out of this. Situation, but just flagging it maybe Gloria with your help and with Clay's help to just. Not get stuck on one side of the perception or the other side of the perception.
Yeah, David, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to add or question kind of the process of this because it does seem like we navigate into the gray area quite a bit. We have, because we're so small and we're so connected, we have. Two small business owners who benefit from living in a tourism town. We have two school employees. I work for Public Health, Jeff works for CS. I see, we have the limits association. So I think some of the like. Some things are more clear cut. If we're voting on something related to EMTs and ambulance, you know, Tyler recuses himself and. Voting something directly related to like benefit to the school, Sally and Jordan recuse themselves, but I just think. How does that process work when it's a little bit grayer? Like, do we chat with Clayton before the meeting? Is it flagged during, you know, how does that discussion kind of proceed? Again, I, I'm going to pick on Jim and Shane just for a minute because it's a small business idea. Like, if we're talking about something with tourism, someone could come up and say. You both are small business owners, you shouldn't be able to vote on this. And so it's like, how do we? Navigate that as trustees, but then seeking the. Advice from Clayton again, either beforehand or during the meeting, how does it work procedurally? And Jim, you have a comment? Did you, I thought you had a question or?
I can jump in because we've, we've been through it a bunch or if you'd like to Gloria.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so typically we'd see an item on an agenda and hopefully we're looking at the agenda early enough that we have. Time to think about it and reflect on whether or not it's an issue. If it's unclear exactly how to handle it. I would email or call Gloria and say like, hey, I saw that, you know, there's a decision to increase the lodging tax by two dollars. On the next agenda and obviously like I'm associated with the hotel, Jim's associated with the hotel, like what do you think we should do and. Gloria, most likely unless she definitely knows the answer is going to then pass that over to Clayton. And then the two of them will come back to me and Jim with their opinion on the right way to handle it, which is going to be something like, you know, at the. Once I read that that agenda topics, what we're discussing at that time in the meeting, I would say, you know. I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion because or. There might be a perception of a conflict on this issue and we've actually received a memo from Clay. That clarifies that this is not actually a conflict and we can go ahead and engage in this discussion because.
Yeah, great. So it's, it's often beforehand.
Yeah, you, you'll, so I'll, I'll tell you this, I have a responsibility. I, I, I have a really a duty and my role to. Call out these things out because if, if you do have a conflict and you vote on something, you could ruin the whole thing. So you, we could, you could. You know, I guess. You could open the whole town up to financial liability because you voted on something that you have a conflict or. You, you have a direct, what I call per se conflict of interest or a conflict of interest that. Rises to the level that you should recuse yourself. And in that case. Beforehand, we'll talk and I'll say, I think you have a conflict and I think you should, my advice is that you've recused yourself. That doesn't mean you have to. So what ends up happening, this has never happened with Silverton since I've been here and I haven't, you know, I haven't been here. You know, terribly long, but. In other municipalities that I represent, I have had to on the record. Say for the record. I believe that this person has. You know, a financial and or a personal interest in this matter that they have not recognized and they're, you know, are not recusing themselves. It's my advice that they are not allowed to vote or recuse themselves on this matter. It's a very uncomfortable situation. But I will do it if I have to. And in that case. The one instance where I've had to do that, that person then kind of backed down in the public setting. Because kind of everybody kind, you know, the entire. The entire attend, you know, the conglomerate, the. People in attendance, the trustees and the people there are kind of like looking at this person like, what is going on about, you know? And you kind of feel that pressure and then, so you know, you don't want to put yourself there, but I think you'll find, and I've written a couple memos now. That I'm not looking to, I don't want to do that and I'm not looking to find. Personal or financial interest. I'm looking and my assumption is always based on the default that. You, you can make a decision and be fundamentally fair. I really only bring those things up where I think it's a per se. Conflict and then it's so obvious that there's really no reason for you to go forward with that. And, and be part of the vote because it just undermines the entire process and I have to kind of point that out. So that's my job to be the bad guy. And you will know beforehand, I'll tell you, look, you can do this. That's great. I see that we're not going to. We're going to agree to disagree here, but I'm going to have to put this on the record and it's going to be in public and it's going to be uncomfortable for you. So my advice is just advice. You can go forward and do whatever you want, but. Just be aware that that, that situation would come up, but it would, I would definitely never surprise you with it.
Thanks.
And it's if you're ever curious or, or have a question about something that impacts you. It's always better to err on the side of asking the question.
Yeah.
Right. And that's, and, and asking about a conflict is not one of those things where you're discussing an issue with staff before a public hearing. That's not a substantive matter. That you're, you're, that you're going outside your role in the quasi judicial function. That is a. You're seeking to do the right thing. And so if you have a question about that, you should always bring, in fact, that's the number one takeaway when we get into it is. You have to disclose. So if you look at that final step on what you need to remember about this, you need to disclose. And it's almost always better to, once you get there, to do it on the record as to why I'm recusing because I, this affects my. Private business and I'm going to, and I'm going to step out. During this discussion and vote and then we'll call you back in when. It's done.
Would you be able to go over that process a little bit? As I received advice from a prior town attorney to like leave the room, but. But an attorney prior to that had said it's sufficient in most matters to disclose and then. State recusal, but then stay in the room and we've kind of. Trustee by trustee varied in that practice. Would you be able to provide us with a recommendation of best practice for us going forward?
Yeah. It's a great point, Mr. Mayor, the, for me, it's not a question at all. I would. Strongly advise that you leave the room. Point. Point being that because you're in the room, just by mere presence, you could be affecting somebody. Um, decision, someone's decision that doesn't want to make, that's friends with you, that doesn't want to make. It doesn't want to be on, you know, that wants to. That thinks it's right, but also, you know, whatever the situation is, you, you're just creating that. Tension and it doesn't need to be there. And so I, 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 I always say, hey, look, if. If you're not voting and you're not allowed to discuss it, why do you need to be here? Why do you need to see it? You can always go back and look at what was discussed. But you know, you could, we've had situations where board members like will sit in the room and mean mug people, right? Like, are you really going to vote against me on this? You know, that sort of thing. So you just, it's better to just not be in the room.
Thank you.
Body language and you know. Eye, eye contact and stuff like that could be enough that. Just, it just is unnecessary for you to be there.
Can I ask a clarifying question around work, how this relates to work sessions versus things you're actually voting on? So that's basically the question. Like if it's a work session about an issue. That you. I don't know. Again, I'm not even thinking of like financial gain, but if it's a work session talking about an issue in town. That you might have some connection to, that maybe you would, basically if you would recuse yourself for the vote. Do you need to recuse yourself for a work session about an issue?
Um, yeah, I would say, well, this is an easy one because I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut out. I'm gonna, you know, cut out a work session from what we're talking about and make them two totally different paths. What we're really talking about here still in the, through the lens of you're in a quasi judicial matter.
Okay.
You would never be discussing something where you're making a, you're making one of these decisions in a public hearing. Where you've already discussed it in a work session.
Yeah.
Because work sessions are, you know, by default, you're not making decisions and you're not discussing like a, a particular. Uh, development or a particular matter that affects somebody's personal rights. Just by default. And so in a work session, you're, you're mostly talking generically about, you know, vision. Polit, you know, overarching policy matters that affect the entire town and not a particular person's. Uh, you know, property or, or rights. And so that would just never. Really come into play or definitely shouldn't come into play because it wouldn't be a conflict. It would be a, you're outside the scope of what a work session should be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm thinking of an example by like, maybe we're talking about.
Can I ask you in a different way? Cause I think I know.
Well, let me just give an example. What if we were talking about, we're having a work session about housing? And we were talking about creative solutions to housing and we were talking about like a vacancy tax or something, something like that. And someone on the board has a vacant home that they regularly have, right? So they may recuse themselves from that ledge. It's, it's still in the legislative. Um, voting, but we, it would be something that the board would potentially vote on in the future. But in that work session around that topic, it may come up, but yet it may be a conflict later. So does that give a better example? I get the quasi judicial point that you're not going to be talking about quasi judicial issues in a work session. But there might be some of the stuff under legislative or administrative that you would be voting on later.
Well, I was just going to expand the question out to also include like committee meetings and not just work sessions. Because like we have had, like things come up where, like using your A D U example. If the ordinance committee is meeting to discuss a draft A D U ordinance revision. Um, and then that same person that's on that committee has that A D U example that you gave. And they're not going to vote on the ordinance itself. Can they engage in the discussion of the draft of the ordinance? Unless it seems like the answer would be no, but.
Right. Especially in this town where everybody did so many things. How does that play out?
Well, I think, you know, so there's two different questions. The work session is different than like being on a committee or advisory. Because if you're, if you know, if you're on an advisory committee to the board and you're the board member on that advisory committee, you know, you're going to vote on it. So Mayor Furman's correct that you know, you should not, you should not try to. Discuss a subject where you know, later you're going to have to recuse yourself when you become the decision maker. In a work session, I think it's really important unless you have like, and it's an obvious, like a per se. Like I would, I would go almost more into like the financial interest issue there. If you have a substantial financial interest in a matter that you're discussing during a work session, which is really hard for me to think of a scenario where you would. It's okay to have different perspectives, right? And you want, you want during that work session to hear everybody's perspective and your life and knowledge and, and. You know, your story. Gives you that knowledge and gives you that different perspective that somebody else might not have. And because you're not making a decision and because. I, I, I find it, I'm finding it very difficult to even think of a scenario in a work session where you'd be discussing something where you'd have to recuse yourself. And this, in a decision later. You know, I think in most cases you're going to be okay. If you feel now, on now that said, this is all a lot of kind of like, uh, on the honor system. So if you're just, if you just are sitting there and you know during a work session that, man, I just, there's just no way I'm going to be able to. Talk about this without bringing in my own personal interest and. And, and I'm, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna try to vie for a, a, a policy. Or, you know, a part of a vision statement that I want for me. Then you should recuse yourself because you know that you're not going to be able to. You know, be, have that fundamental fairness and be unbiased and with no judgment coming into that decision possibly later. But again, I just can't, that, that'd be a very extreme circumstance and that would just be something we deal with, you know, ad hoc, uh, uh, at the moment.
Yeah.
And you know, during a work session, you'll be able to tell too, if somebody's like, obviously trying to steer the discussion in a way that's like. You know, only benefits them, right? So, um, again, if you have the, if, if, if your interests align with the town's public interest, especially in a work session and it's. And, and you're just having these discussions, it's okay to say, well, look, I'm a business owner and you know, I think that the business owners would want this. Because this is my perspective. That's okay. Um, that's not okay if you own the business and you're making a decision, you know, later on as a decision maker. But you're allowed to bring in your personal knowledge and background into that, in those discussions. But it is a gray area. So you, you know, again, if you just can't do it, you can, you, if there's nothing wrong with you saying, look, I just can't do this. I, 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 I want this to go a certain way. I just can't see this with an open mind. I'm just not going to participate in this particular agenda item on, on the work session schedule.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know it's clear as mud, but, um, I think you'll know. I think you'll know personally, it's one of those things like it's in your heart, you'll know it. Okay. So here, and this kind of goes towards it too, like, um, just because you have a dog doesn't mean you can't vote on leash laws. Just because you pay taxes doesn't mean you can't vote on tax laws. Right? So these are the things that, those are the things that kind of affect everyone. Same thing with like my business example, a business tax affects every business owner. That doesn't mean you can't talk about it. It affects everybody equally across the board. And so that kind of takes you out of that appearance of impurity because. Everybody pays taxes. Otherwise, nobody would ever, you'd never be able to vote on like a tax increase or talk about a tax increase as a trustee. Because you pay taxes, but that doesn't rise to the level because it affects everyone generally. So that's another good way to look at it. Cool.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I like the tax, taxes and leash law example.
Yeah, I should have gone to that quicker, but, um. That's, uh, that's my kind of go to. Everybody loves dogs. Everybody loves puppies. Everybody thinks their dog's great and wants to be off leash, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't have leash laws or you should, and you still couldn't vote on it.
Well, my dog just ate all the takeout dinner in our car tonight, so.
You guys need to have like, uh, have you guys ever seen the dog shaming? My daughters are, you know, I don't let them go on TikTok and weird stuff like that. I don't even know what that is. But for some reason I have TikTok, no, against TikTok people, but I just don't know what it is. And so like you're afraid of what you don't know. So my kids can't do that, um, but they somehow have gotten. A hold of these like, it's like on YouTube kids or something where they have these dog shamings and they like tie like a big. Sign around their dog's neck that says like, I ate my, I ate. You know, I ate Lily's homework and I'm, you know, I don't apologize for it and stuff like that. So I think, I think it's funny, whatever. And Sunday I'll show you guys my, we just got a little puppy, a miniature golden doodle. And it's too soon to joke about in front of my wife, but she, it's a small little thing, right? And it's like follows you around and she stepped on it and broke its leg. And that's like, so our little puppy has been in a cast for like the past three weeks. And it's kind of like drags it around like a, like a, like it's like a pirate stump. Um, it's so, it's so cute and, and kind of macabre in the same way. And anyway, it's funny and I, I have all these like dog shaming. And, and person shaming that goes along with that, but I'm not allowed to joke about it yet because, you know, our puppy's still on a cast. All right. Okay. So here's, and here's a good, here's my, here's a good takeaway, step by step slide for what you do when you think you have a conflict. And then there you go, Mayor Furman. I have my, my, my last thing. And for those of you who don't know, if you capitalize something, that means you're like emphasizing and yelling in a text. And so take that away from the leave the room. I'm, I'm text emphasizing with capitalization. Another great thing I learned from my 12 year old daughter. Okay. That is the conclusion of my presentation for, uh, new board members and refresher. On, um, best practices, processes, ethical issues. What questions do you have?
So for, for anyone who might watch this on YouTube later, I'm curious if you could talk about. The processes for the community to raise questions about ethical concerns. And like what's, what's the, what are their resources for that? And how do they navigate that?
So if it's the same thing and, um, you can bring it up obviously before a matter. If you believe that if you're a community member and you believe that. Um, a particular trustee or commissioner or member of an advisory board.
Now, did we lose you again? Ah, shoot, the final hour.
Hopefully not a whole hour.
Final five.
That was a great question.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that, Shane.
And I'm sure he has an excellent answer.
Um, I was just gonna say overall, this has been really helpful and informative. I'll share that with Clay too, but. Really good learning.
Sorry for joining your question. I wanted to make sure we covered the committees also.
Yeah, no, I think it's really helpful because it is, um, yeah, we all wear many hats in a tiny town like this, so. I think a question I had, and maybe it's for us and for Clayton is like. How to continue to educate the public about our role, right? Because we're in a tiny town where you get. I won't say accosted in the supermarket, but you get talked to wherever you go. And so Gloria, you had your helpful tip sheet, but again, I don't know if Clayton has any. Good advice on how to set people, set the public's expectations well for the role that we do play. And again, I think in efforts to be transparent with the community and or be accessible in some form. How those go in tandem, because after Clayton's presentation, I feel like, well, you just hide out in your house and you don't let anybody talk to you or influence you or say anything.
They come to your house too. They'll come over, but. I think too, you're right Dana, because it's also a part of how we hear and find out about what people are thinking. So like in the listening role.
I, um. I, I, I got onto my hotspot on my phone, so maybe we'll do better.
Cool.
So that way, let me, we can come off, I'm going to come off my shared screen here. And we'll just talk. Are you seeing me or my shared screen? You should be seeing me, right? Okay. Oh, look. And then we got. Just you Davis was hiding. I didn't get to pick on him because I didn't see him, because I have my shared screen on, so I can see everybody. So, um. I think, I don't know where, I'll just start over. I don't know where I froze. The, um. You know, there is a state level investigative body that will look into. Um, ethical violations or, you know, conflicts within local governments, but they don't. They're, they're a great resource, but they're really, what they're going to do is they're going to come back and they're going to say. Have you exhausted all your local remedies for this? And so, you know, our local remedies are in place now because we have our code of ethics that are now. Um, that has passed by ordinance that are now codified in, in our town code. And we have to follow those code of ethics. You took an oath to do it. Insofar that there is a, a, a conflict or an ethical issue. Will the town staff will know about it and we'll, we'll address that with that individual trustee. And I will say that, uh, previously the trustees have been very, um, open with this. And they understand, especially now after this presentation, they understand that. Hiding something only makes things worse. It'll eventually come out and you could be subject to personal liability. And so I don't think anybody here wants to risk, um, you know, the cost of a development. Uh, as a personal liability acting outside their scope of employment. Um, and I also will say that I'm personally. Uh, dedicated to making sure that the town, that the board runs ethically. And that we don't get into any quagmires involving conflicts because it's just not worth it and exposes the town. And it's, you know, my goal and job to keep, um, the town as far away from unnecessary liability as possible. And so, you know, I, I really do think we have those triggers in place to protect against any issues like that. So what I tell the people is that you have a great staff and you have a very transparent board. Um, that does things in, in public. And if I see an ethical matter, I will address it. And if I have to, if that person, after addressing it, I will give that hard advice. Uh, at, at the public, at a public meeting that this person, I believe. Um, hasn't, has a conflict and should be recusing themselves and that maybe they refuse to do so. And there's also. Oh, I'll, 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 I'll leave it at that. So I think that's enough. There, there's, there's a lot of steps, right? So there's the personal recusal, there's staff informational, and then my. My advice, and then you have, if all that fails and somebody thinks that there's a massive conspiracy. Um, involving the trustees, all the staff. And, uh, me as the town attorney willing to risk my bar license and my career over it. Um, to hide something, then they of course can take it to the state level and ask for the. Um, investigative, investigatory board at state level to come in and conduct an investigation. But again, that threshold's very high. Um, and at that point, it's, it's such an obvious mess at that point when they get involved that. You know, I just don't, I just don't, you hardly ever see it getting to that point. Uh, but I, I, I think that this board and that our staff is dedicated to protecting the town. Uh, interests and keeping us away from liability and that, you know, you know, we're not going to be getting into any ethical. Quagmires in the future.
Thank you. And while you're rebooting, Dana asked a great question that I think is the prequel to that question.
Well, it's along the lines like this has been so informative and really helpful, Clayton. I really appreciate your time doing this and Gloria setting it up. Um, it just clears up a lot of things for me. Um, but how do we help educate the public in our role, right? Because we live in this small town where we're approached in many different places where we go. Um, in very positive ways and then in also challenging ways. And so how do we, how, how do we help educate the public in the role that we play? You know, we're no longer their direct listening ear per se. But I know a lot of us as trustees and friends and neighbors, we value the fact that we live in a small community. And we like knowing what our neighbors think and we are representatives, we of. we of, you know, our community as a whole. And so we, we need and value community feedback. So I just think, how do we balance those two roles and how do we help educate the public in our interactions with them?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the first way that you can help educate the public is if you're approached about a matter that you think isn't, you know, is under kind of this umbrella of issues that we discuss is you say, oh, you know, that's a great question and um, you know, we've been trained on this and we have um a code of ethics. And here, read this code of ethics and we're all, we all took an oath to abide by this. And and if you think there's an issue, um, you can bring it up to staff and you can bring it up in a public meeting during a comment. And we have mechanisms in place to address that. Um, the second, you know, and I think that's being able to point somebody to the code of ethics, I think is important. I think that was a great step for the board to take. And also it's kind of explaining like, yeah, and you know what? We have a town attorney that, that one of their jobs is to make sure that we don't make decisions, unethical decisions that expose the town to liability and we take that very seriously. The second way I think you can help educate the people uh in the community and the public that are concerned about this is by continuing to conduct your meetings in the way that you have been in an open and transparent setting um and to apply due process and and fundamental fairness in every aspect of your decision-making process. And the more you do that, and that's what I've seen kind of happening over the past a year or so, the the more trust you, the community has in you and the less you know, the less questions they have, they see the board running transparently. They see the mayor and the trustees and other um commissioners recusing themselves on issues. They see that the mechanisms are in place to protect against their concerns. You know, for unethical or fundamentally unfair governing. And then the trust grows and the complaints lessen. I mean, you're never gonna get rid of all of them, but you know, you can only do so much, right? Some, if somebody makes a decision that you're acting unethically and they won't listen to reason um and they want to ignore everything that you guys are doing to protect against that, then there's nothing you can do about it. So I I think really education and you know, can be done person to person and then education can be done as as you play out your role and make an example um of these situations when when they come up.
Yeah, that's helpful. I'm also thinking not just in people's concerns about transparency or conflict of interest, but just community members wanting to bend our ear, right? They want to approach you at the dump and say, hey, I really care about this. And just your advice, Gloria gave us some great tips on how to refer that. But just if you have any other advice on how we help educate the public on the role that we serve as trustees as opposed to again, their favorite citizen voice.
Sure. But I, 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 I think it's great. I think you should talk to them. I think you should be yourself and talk to them and tell them what, you know, what you, how you see your role. Your story is yours and nobody can change that. I mean, your truth is unchangeable. So you tell your story, how you got there, why you're doing it, that you took an oath that, you know, if they cross a line with a question or asking you something that you can't answer, um, then you just tell them like, look, I'd love to talk about that, but that's something that's gonna come up later and I can't discuss that because it's on an agenda item that is gonna, that I'm gonna need to be, you know, and I haven't heard all the evidence yet, so I haven't made a decision. Or, yeah, no, that's a great topic. Um, the, the board is, if you listen to the last public discussion or um, if you go look at meeting from, you know, April, you'll see on, as a matter of, it's on public record that the board hundred percent stands behind education and um tourism and growing our town and having the best thing bathrooms that anybody is ever gonna have. And so you, you're, you're okay to have those discussions. You know, the, the, the sticking point really is with those hearings versus like your meetings. And you can be you and you can have an opinion, you're, you're a political entity. But you just can't, you need to be careful about that agency issue and you need to be careful about the quasi judicial function issues. But other than that, I really encourage you to talk to, talk to people, let them bend your ear, tell them, you know, what the board's um, you know, mission and vision is for the town and 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 and, you know, be a politician.
That's great, thank you. It's not hide out in your house and never have a coffee hour.
No, just don't, just don't go drinking with trustee Harper and drink and drive. I'm not, I'm teasing, I know you guys don't do that. I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you though, somebody's looking for you to mess up. And so just understand that you're at a, you know, you're, you have to operate, you gotta kind of level up as a trustee. You're no longer Joe Citizen, you give up those rights.
Jeff, did you have any?
Not enough to drive.
Yeah. Jeff, did you have any questions?
No, I mean, I think this has been a lot, it all comes down to using good judgment and making sound decisions and not speaking when you don't feel like it's right, which falls into some of the other work I've done in the past. I guess my, the one thing that going all the way back to the beginning of the presentation is just, my one question is, is when we have questions or we wanted to, like, we feel the need to discuss something further just to help make a decision, like, how do we go about that? And is that possible to discuss things with other trustees or not really without it being in a forum?
Yeah, so that the rule is you, three or more. So if you're talking with one other trustee, it's kind, it seems kind of silly, but you can kind of talk about whatever you want. The rule still states if three or more, like if you're having, if you're out having a coffee with Mayor Proton, Barney and trustee Biarma, and you guys are discussing, like, all of a sudden the discussion transfers to, you know, a public matter that you're gonna, you know, that's on a gender or has been, or you know, you're gonna have to deal with as a board, you just, you're in a public, now you've created, you're at a basically an unnoticed meeting and um are in violation of cora because you're having a public meeting without notifying the public. If there's two of you, technically, you can discuss whatever you want, although my advice is always not to. Um, but what you see a lot is, and 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 especially in, you know, highly political bipartisan type settings, you'll see like one trustee going to each trustee individually and kind of lobbying. And I would avoid that as well, um, just because you, you're such a gray area, there's no reason to mess with it. And if you do have a question, my advice is always, you can talk to the like, hey, I'm a new trustee. I have this question for you, um, seasoned trustee. What, what'd you do in this situation? That's totally fine. Um, you can also talk to staff and if you, if staff, you can talk to staff and say, hey Gloria, you know, I had this question, I'd like to talk uh with Clay and I'm available to speak with you as well. So you know, you, you just go through staff first because I cost money, but the, you know, I'm try, I try to get to the point quickly. If you have a, you know, a yes or no question, I'm not gonna keep you on the phone for an hour. I'll answer your question candidly and quickly. And I'm always, I'm, you know, usually available, you know, same day or day after to answer any questions you guys have. And so that's kind of your, don't be afraid to ask another committee member, don't be afraid to ask another trustee, but don't ask trustee um business related questions if there's more than you and that other trustee. Does that help? All right.
But if we're all at the avalanche and we're not talking about business stuff, that's okay.
You guys can all get together and talk about nonsense as much as you want. Or not even nonsense, like serious stuff, but as long as it isn't um
Home stuff.
An agenda item, you're fine. If you end up, guys, if you're like three of you are talking about something like, like avalanche control areas and like, somehow that comes up at a later meeting that wasn't on the agenda, that, that it doesn't, it's not gonna affect you, you, you'll know when you're trying to discuss something that's, should be discussed in a, a public setting.
It's hard to get us all in one place, though, so.
And then we'll just start cup stacking.
I think the last thing you guys want to do is, you know, take up more of your time and 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 another voluntary setting to discuss stuff that you're gonna discuss anyway in a public setting.
Yeah, I think actually I was just thinking about this, though, I'm not even sure if Jordan was at the art show tonight. That's just how little we actually see each other. But I know Dana and I were there and then I was like, oh gosh, I wonder if Jordan is here, like, is this? And we're at the art show and but that's totally fine.
Totally cool. If you guys were ignoring each other, like, just for the sake of it, I think it'd be weird to other people who knew that you're on the board, right? So be like, why, why are they, they, don't they know each other? Isn't the board cool? Aren't they tight? Don't they get along?
Remember Sally, we're trying to make it so lots of people want to join the board, even the kids.
Yeah.
We've almost hit, we've almost hit thirty likes. We need to film another video.
Oh, nice, nice, Jim. That's good news.
Are we promoting this uh this post?
Yeah, we, we need to talk about the really amazing ethics training we all had because it was really good.
Yeah, we're definitely stronger together.
Uh, well, Clayton, thank you. I, I don't think, oh, I'll guess I'll just throw it out there. Anybody have any final questions?
I learned so much, thanks. That was great, Clay.
Thank you. Glad.
We'll make sure Tyler watches the video.
He promised he would.
Uh, well, Clay, thank you very much. Really appreciate this and thank you for your work for the town.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
Good luck with the puppy and the cast.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Do you guys want to see the puppy in the cast?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys want to see it?
Yes.
Sally, what'd your dog eat?
It would be evil if I stopped.
Oh, my dog just ate.
Sally, where's your puppy?
Doghouse. Oh, my gosh, look at how cute that puppy is.
She was sitting right outside the door. Say hi with the cast.
I wanna see the cast.
She won't even remember she had it like two days after it's off.
Oh, yeah. It's like oh, new puppy.
Oh, Texas taco lick.
Oh, Texas taco, yum.
Isn't that funny? I'll, I'll show you, if we have, if we have time sometime, I'll show you a video of her like running around like dragging it.
I'm gonna put these guys to bed.
Guys, thank you.
See you, guys.
Thank you. Clay, find your bookshelf. I don't know where it is.
Yeah, you know, I couldn't upload it as my background, that's what that's.